Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of citizens. Officer Beal, could you please start for us?
Officer Beal.
Senator Gabe Harrison.
Starting with Dave Brimbaugh.
Diane Murray.
Crystal Baldwin.
Camille Crump.
Connie Cuthbert.
Joanna Thompson.
Josh Walters.
Tom Crist.
Charlie Barber.
Nancy Flotter.
April Moore.
Claudia.
Ann Frazee.
Debbie Grand.
Sarah Fisher.
Mary Glasky.
Pearl Peely.
Rachel Rus.
Amanda Oul.
John Colson.
Brett Carpenter.
Eva Carpenter.
Greg Rice.
Jamie Carroll.
Laura Pepel.
Lindsay Gupting.
Jen Roberts.
Julie Becker.
Cheryl Predeski. Thank you for coming this evening.
Next on the agenda is comments from citizens. Again, this is East Noble Public Comment Session. This is our business meeting. So when you are asked to speak, we ask you to conduct yourself in a professional and businesslike manner. Please state your name, address, and the topic you would like to be commenting on. This portion of the meeting will be limited to 20 minutes in length. At this point in time, we have 10 speakers, so each speaker will get two minutes. All statements to be directed to the Brad Ziding Officer, which is me at this point. No person may address each or question individual board members. Respect what others have to say, and please do not interrupt or comment during their allotted time. At this point in time, this is not a two-way conversation or open debate. It is for individuals to comment that the board will take under consideration and advisement during voting processes. Please choose the voting in front of you when you address the board. And if you have any materials you'd like to pass out to the board, there is a basket in the chair up front. Please put it in that basket, and it will be collected afterwards. First on the list tonight is Jen Roberts. Ms. Roberts?
Oh, Jen Roberts, 1350 South Sherman Street, right here, South Side. So I haven't been to a board meeting in 16 months. And contrary to popular belief, there was a rumor that it was because Dr. Chorus came on board, and then there was a rumor that it was Mrs. Rothenberger that ran me off, but that's totally not true. See, 16 months ago, I brought home an eight-week-old puppy. And my eight-week-old puppy does not like it when I stay at school really late or stay at meetings very long. So I would go home, and I didn't come to school board meetings. However, I feel I will probably be coming back very soon. Because you see, this guy right here, yeah, he and I just passed our therapy team evaluation. So we're working on just the last little bit of paperwork and paying those final things, getting the insurance all rounded out, getting the proper paperwork to the proper people with East Noble. And then he will be coming to school attached to me. I'll have his leash in my hand all the time. He will be a therapy dog with me. We will work as a team here at South Side. And hopefully, he'll be interested in maybe coming to a school board meeting to meet you in person. His name is Jax Erb.
Next on the list is April Moore. Is this more?
Okay, try not to be distracted by this. Um, April Moore, I am from here in Greenville. Growing up with a parent in the Air Force, Veterans Day was a big deal for us in school. We had elaborate celebrations. I can remember the stands being full of people in their military dress uniform. And being a member of junior ROTC my freshman year, it felt like hours that we were standing at attention during that ceremony. I then moved to a smaller town to finish out my high school career, and I don't remember a single Veterans Day event during that time. My guess is they were either very underwhelming compared to what I'd seen in the past, or they just didn't happen. Not sure. When my children started at East Noble, I was excited to see the annual Veterans Day celebrations. And I was happy to see this year that it has continued. And was so excited to see all the pictures on Facebook, the breakfast they had for the veterans at one of the schools. It was great. And was happy to see that finals didn't stop the high schools from having their own Veterans celebration. They were able to do a teams meeting and have some amazing veterans come and speak to the students during that time. I was also excited to see that four of our elementary schools have been awarded the Indiana Purple Star designation this year as well. So shout out to those schools. And I want to give a huge thank you to all the staff involved with the planning, the implementation of the not only Veterans Day activities, but also making sure that we meet those qualifications to be that Indiana Purple Star school. I thank you very much, as I'm sure all of our military and veteran families do.
Next on the list is Ann Frazee. Ms. Frazee.
Ann Frazee, Fort Wayne Public Schools. Recently, there was an article in the Journal Gazette written by Michael Schaper, a fall state professor and director of educational leadership program. He saw a campaign sign with only the words, "Hey, I can't." Schaper uses that phrase to say he can't vote for politicians who give state tax money to wealthy families to use at religious schools. He can't vote for anyone who believes that public schools are provided litter boxes. He can't vote for anyone who believes that librarians and classroom teachers are evil and supplying porn. For me, Schaper's article was pure common sense. Common sense tells me that school boards are made up of individuals who care deeply about the youth of the community. They are positive, results-driven people who generously give time and energy to all. Common sense tells me that the superintendent, the school's administrators are educated, experienced, focused, and driven to be fair. Common sense tells me that teachers care deeply about the subject matter and their students. Common sense and experience tell me that teachers respect parents and expect the same in return. As Michael Schaper said, "Hey, I can't." Hey, I can't sit back and watch EN's school board be attacked. The busy board works hard to problem-solve complicated issues. Why would anyone want to make their job more difficult? Hey, I can't sit by and watch EN's schools and teachers be attacked. The staff works hard to implement curriculum, meet standards, and improve scores. Busy teachers are not in the business of corrupting youth. Hey, I can't understand others who don't appreciate diversity. Hey, I can't understand others who reject the concepts of public schools, separation of church and state, and to work for the common good.
Next on the list is Audra Osby.
Hi, Audra Osby.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Oh, interesting. Audra Osby, 600 East Greenville. First of all, I'd like to thank, thank you to all board members for the hard work in the state of the corporation and round call meetings and asking for all of the parents, the input from the parents that helped that we get more support from the parents in the future. I'd like to start with the division in the community over who thinks what is right for the kids. There seems to be one side who believes that all things LGBTQ, social, emotional learning, thinks that we're sexualizing children and teaching war ideologies and everything. Everything to those kids, everything else that is bad, that is therefore against, a sin against nature and God. There's the other side who believe that the way of the world is changing, kindness and acceptance, and just treating people as they would like to be treated themselves should be the norm. I don't see how these two can come together, especially when you bring a hate group such as Moms for Liberty to monitor what goes on in the schools and to push to remove the books if they think kids shouldn't be reading. They're all about the government not parenting their kids and having rights for parents. But then they want to have the right to tell other parents what their kids should and shouldn't have access to. I wonder how many people don't want their kids reading objectionable material, but have a problem having their kids with their phones, computers, tablets, and new rooms with no supervision and unlimited access to the internet. I think that's more dangerous. Do some research and ask yourself why Moms for Liberty don't go into inner-city school districts or districts that are filled with minorities. Think about that. The list of books banned by Moms for Liberty are filled with LGBTQ and marginalized communities. It's easier to control the people that are not educated. Other states are starting to see what they're doing and saying no, and we need to do the same. I don't want people coming into the school system who are not professionally trained.
Next on the list is Claudia Knott. Ms. Knott?
Good evening, board. I'm Dr. Claudia Knott, class of '69, East Noble grad. I'm also tonight speaking for another 1969 grad, Mary Allred Jeff in our class, my best friend in high school. I want to follow up on some concerns I voiced at the last meeting about the blitz that you have experienced from the ultra-right. And I would imagine that gets very wearisome and may get lost in the weeds at times with the constant flow of complaints that come in. So I just want to keep the big picture in mind here and that we look at this as a national movement. Because the ultimate goal of these extremists is to discredit public education and then to destroy democracy itself, and I am not exaggerating, okay? It's not that the ultra-right doesn't understand the purpose of education, it's that they don't like it. They don't like public education's inclusiveness, its embrace of everyone, all races, ethnicities, religions, immigrants, genders, and sexual orientations. They dislike the public part of public education. They dislike social and emotional learning, which teaches children to accept and respect people who are different from themselves, an essential skill in our diverse world, but a skill scorned by those who believe in exclusion. They dislike critical race theory, which by the way, they have no idea what it really is. They dislike it. It just means to end racism, we must examine racism's deep roots and institutional nature. And that requires us, all of us, to face ourselves honestly so that our history tells the whole story. A whole story, a wholeness that is at times difficult, but is necessary, but that threatens their Christian white tribalism, is what it is. And I would ask you, please continue to serve and defend public education as it's intended to be, the foundation of our democracy. Stay true to Thomas Jefferson's maxim that an educated citizenry is an essential ingredient of essential repugnance.
Next on the list is Greg Rice. Mr. Rice?
Yes. One of the current few things that was said at the last board meeting by one of our friends who misrepresented the founding of the United States. I have a list of six states here that started out as Anglican Church of England. I have another list of five or six that held their official religion as congregational church. And then another list that were explicitly Christian. For instance, Delaware State Constitution stated in Article 22, "Every person who shall be chosen a member of either the house or appointed to any office or place of trust shall take the following oath: I do profess faith in God the Father, and in Jesus Christ, His only Son, and in the Holy Ghost, one God, blessed forevermore, and I do acknowledge the holy scriptures of the Old Testament and New Testament to be given by divine inspiration." And I have other quotes here, but I don't have enough time. The federal government, however, did not want to declare a national religion because at the time, they wanted to trade with the Islamic nations of the Barbary Coast, who would not trade with Christian nations. John Adams did not write the Treaty of Tripoli, which states that the U.S. is not a Christian nation, but he did sign the treaty. History is clear that what he did, that he did so so that the U.S. could trade with the Muslim nations and not be attacked by Barbary pirates. The U.S. was not only officially Christian on a federal level, culturally and officially at the state level, it was explicitly Christian. John Adams actually wrote, and I will quote, "The Declaration of Independence laid the cornerstone of human government upon the first precepts of Christianity." You wouldn't expect to find religion or Chris-- that was unquote. You wouldn't expect to find religion or Christianity in a legal document such as the Constitution, but you will certainly find it in the Declaration of Independence. Thank you.
Next on the list is Brett Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, I also was kind of disturbed by what that other person said at the last meeting. He was trying to imply that because the Constitution doesn't explicitly say God, well, then this wasn't a Christian nation. Well, that's actually a logical fallacy. He's arguing from the absence of evidence. There's actually a name to it. It's called a pill to ignorance. That would be like saying, well, because the Constitution doesn't declare the United States officially an English-speaking nation, well, that means we don't speak English. That's just absurd. Can't argue like that. That person, that same person also came up here, and I think he's a crazy person. But he's the one who agrees with what you guys are doing, and the books you put in, and all the other stuff you're doing. Well, he came in here one day and said, and I'm going to quote him, he said, "There is no binary sex in this world." He also said that his wife was a biologist, and that she knows this stuff. Well, I looked up online, and I found the most prominent, well-respected biologist in the United States today, who I actually don't like very much, an evolutionary biologist, Richard Dawkins. In his conversation with Chris Morgan, here's what he said. "As a biologist, there are two sexes, and that's all there is to it." Even the guy that spoke said his wife. Wife? Husband. That's very binary. And he called her she. She, very binary. Well, the one thing that I think this points out is that education in the United States is failing. East Noble is failing to educate children, critical thinking. The average homeschooler does better than public schools. And East Noble and the surrounding areas is in the bottom of the bunch. You're failing. You're failing the kids. You're not teaching them, start doing your job.
Next is Dave Brimbaugh. Mr. Brimbaugh?
I have a handout for all of you. I'm Dave Brimbaugh from Llano, Indiana. I'm here to talk about the attendance policy. I have three sons, Ross, 21, Remington, senior in high school, Redmond, junior in high school. We show cattle state and national level. In the past, Mr. Kimmel, your ag department, written a letter to the attendants, and it was accepted. All good. This year, that is not the case. Talking to Mr. Shaki, he cannot do it because in power school, they cannot label that as an extended educational out-of-classroom experience. My oldest son got a full-ride scholarship to Blackhawk East Junior College from Showing Caval. He has then graduated, went on to Western University, and got a full-ride scholarship there. After that, he's going to go for his masters. I am promoting my kids nationally, educationally through the ag department. Will the county consolidate its schools? It's accepted, not a problem. Central Noble it is. I'm asking you as a governing body of this school district to deem agriculture, out-of-classroom experiences, educational, and to give Mr. Shaki a way to label in power schools. Less than 1% of high school athletes get scholarships. Over 30% of agricultural students get scholarships. I, as a father, would like to say so in my kids' education and future education without student loan debt. My oldest son has only paid for room and board.
Next on the list is Tim Schlatter. Mr. Schlatter?
My name is Tim Schlatter, 242 South Park Avenue. The people who come to every meeting and browbeat the board are getting tired of something. It is clearly the left that demands compliance to its ideology. Fail to comply, and you will be demonized, shamed, guilted, accused, and canceled. These are the words that one of these people said to me. "I never demanded anything. I'm not the one trying to cancel certain books." That's them. "I'm not the one trying to demonize trans children." That would be them. This is known as projection. It is a debate tactic used to throw the other side off, accuse the others of what you are doing. He also said, "The left demands that theories be taught as fact." A well-supported, evidence-based theory becomes acceptable until disproven and is based on at least one fact. This is the basis for science. Gravity can be both law and theory. So can evolution. Look it up. Then another of these people says, "Evolution does not qualify as a theory. It cannot be observed. It cannot be tested in laboratory. It goes against the fundamental laws of science." Sorry, it is a law and a theory, and I would love to see your credentials to prove otherwise. You don't have any idea as to what you are talking about. And misquoting thermoses and the law of thermodynamics isn't going to work. These are the people wasting the board's valuable time trying to ban classic books, ban trans kids, and trying to change our curriculum. I have a friend, she's a woman, she's got an "in," not an "out." She's got breasts, she's got long hair. Guess what she doesn't have? She does not have ovaries. She has testes. Please tell me what she is.
Okay, that concludes our comments from the citizens session. So next on the agenda tonight is minutes of the October 18, 2023 meeting. Board, you had a chance for review. Any questions or comments? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Most the same. Motion carries. Okay, board, also on your packet was claims of November 15, 2023. You had a chance to review. Any questions or comments? I'll make a motion to accept, and it's written. I'll second. We have a motion to approve as presented by Dr. Jansen, seconded by Mr. Trulow. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Most the same. Motion carries. That brings us to personnel items, board. So under the resignations, retirements, and terminations, we have no retirements and no terminations?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second. We have a motion to accept as presented by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Dr. Jansen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Most the same. This motion carries. Reassignments?
I'll make a motion to accept reassignment. I'll second.
We have a motion to accept it by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Most the same. Motion carries. And then the leave request, there is none on the agenda, so. Oh, new hires. I'm sorry. Gotcha, new hires. We'll do that one. Uh, new hires. There was a few. You had a chance to review. I'll make a motion to accept, and it's written. I'll second. We have a motion by Dr. Jansen to approve it presented, seconded by Mr. Trulow. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Most the same. Motion carries. That brings us to our instructional portion of the agenda. Dr. Brimbaugh?
Yeah, we're very excited to be here at South Side of the Supreme. And Ms. Merrick and her friends are going to be sharing about the literacy project, which has been airing off the ground. Okay, so we have this so that you guys can kind of see, and up there so that you guys can kind of see. So it's the same, it's the same. But it is two different computers, so we'll try to make sure we're on the same page. I, Gabe Harrison, from kindergarten to elementary, this is my fourth year as a principal in this building. And then I'm joined by Julie Becker, internal coach at South Side. Jen Roberts, second grade teacher. Okay. Yeah, we just have to make sure that I, I'm not smart enough to exist. Okay, well, to Jen then. Our goal for tonight is just to give you an overview of South Side's reading history as well as kind of our reading future. I, this is my 20th year in education, we have changed a lot of things when it comes to reading, some of that by the state, some of it by district. So I just kind of want to kind of show you where South Side is coming from. We've never hit the fact that we are obviously below where we need to be. Mrs. Becker came up with this graphic last year to kind of show BOY means beginning of the year, MLI means middle of the year, EOI is end of the year. So it kind of shows you, obviously, no kid in kindergarten starts where they need to be, beginning of the year like that's their learning curve in kindergarten. It's not like you don't see any number there. But you will see that where we start with kids already where they need to be when they come into a grade as well. There are lots of factors that go into whether kids come prepared for kindergarten or they come in prepared for any grade, but we can only deal with what we have and the time frame that we have, so we're going to kind of show you where we went. So we looked at last year, looking at our reading benchmarks. So that's the reading level kids are at by end of the year. We wanted to see how far kids were from where they needed to be. So that's kind of where you see here. So you see anywhere from 17 levels below where they needed to be, all the way up to above where they needed to be. So it kind of shows you, the blue is for beginning of the year, and the red is end of the year. We kind of wanted to look at it that way. Another way to look at it is this next one, we also wanted to look at growth. We always look at our kids aren't where they need to be, but how much growth have we made? So right here in blue is the year of '21, '22, and then you'll see the red is '22, '23. So we went back two years. So you can kind of see growth for kids going two reading levels in a year. Typical state says about three reading levels in a year is what kids would make, okay? So you can kind of see where we've been. So that's where we've been at South Side. Now we need to talk about where we're going. Again, just in the four years that I've been principal, we've changed what we're doing. One thing last year that we did that I was really thankful for is that Dr. Grimal said, "Each student in the building should get a reading group every day." So not just your kids who are below, not just your bubble kids that were, but every single kid should be getting a guided reading group. So that's what we started with last year, and what we kind of continued for this year. And I'm going to let Julie talk about the lit pad, right? I don't know how much you know about that, but it has a big impact in what we are doing currently in reading. And I will apologize. What you want first is on the second page. Let's take a look in the correct order. I guess that was on me.
All right. If you want to back up a little bit, in May, the Indiana Legislature passed House Bill 1358, and it defines the science of reading as related to reading instruction in Indiana. And I just want to make this very first part of it, because a lot of words appear that really define what we're doing with reading. It says, "The science of reading means a vast interdisciplinary body of scientifically-based research that requires the explicit systematic inclusion of the following five essential components: phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension." This verbiage from the bill is taken from the National Reading Panel's report, which identified the five components of effective early reading instruction. Sometimes you'll hear that called the five pillars of reading instruction. Phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. The work we do as coaches at East Noble revolves around integrating these components and targeting curriculum and editorial instruction. In response to this initiative, the state has partnered with SEL, which is the University of Indianapolis. Um, in response to this initiative, the state has partnered with SEL, which is the University of Indianapolis. I have to read this one off the paper, I can never remember. It's the Center of Excellence in Leadership of Learning, um, to develop what's called the literacy cadre. So East Noble's joined the second cohort of this cadre. They started a year ago and there were a few schools in it. Now there are, um, I don't know how many schools are in it, but there are a lot. Um, there's what?
I think almost 200.
Yeah, there's almost 200 schools that are running throughout the state. Um, the mission of the cadre is to ensure that 95% of future students can read proficiently by the end of grade three. And having looked at our data before we talk about this, you can see that we have a lot of work to get there. Their research shows that 95% of students, um, can read proficiently by the end of grade three. This is in your packet right here. It's a little bit closer for you to be able to read that. But, uh, these are the goals of the cadre. Every time we have a cadre meeting, we show these goals. There are different benchmarks along the way together. As you see in the bottom, why is that 95%? I'm looking to say by the end of grade three, we will demonstrate proficiency in foundational reading skills by the year 2027. So that's our ultimate goal. So what does mean for East Noble, some of the things that we've been doing and things that we're going to be doing. Uh, the principals and coaches attended a summer training in Indianapolis. And it was really neat because we met experts in the area of educational research. They were there the whole week with us. And they're the people that dove into the research and helped us understand it and how it relates to reading instruction. Um, we were trained in student-centered coaching, and that's a coaching model that's been adopted by SEL. So, um, we are engaged in coaching cycles with teachers at our individual schools. We participate in bimonthly professional development of the SEL along with the principals. It's an hour and a half, twice a month, and it's, there's a couple hundred people on there every time. And they take these, these experts and come back and they're teaching us all about those five components. So we're taking all this information about the science of reading and providing professional development for East Noble staff, whether that's corporation-wide or even tailored to our individual buildings and what we do in our communities. We work closely with a training support specialist from Regent A. So I think that the support that the cadre has given us is really great because it's Carrie Rackett. If you're familiar with her, she was an instructional coach at Rose City. She's our, our TSS, our training support specialist. But each of the schools in the cadre has a TSS that works with them. So it's not like they're just turning us loose and letting us do our thing. We have to kind of report to her, she's like our coach, but she does book studies with us. Um, she comes to the schools once a month. She'll meet with teachers. Um, she has a meeting with principal and your coach once a month. So there is that, um, level of support from that as well. Um, like I said, we gave the students that are coaching cycles and then we share all of this data with SEL, who is, um, looking at the effectiveness of their cadre. That's what everything's about.
Okay, so going along with the Lit Cadre, because this is something that we really needed to look at, was the breakdown of literacy skills. Kids are missing key components that they need to become fluent readers. And so you will see that East Noble, uh, came up with small literacy group skills, and there is a progression. So it kind of shows you, and this is not just East Noble came up with this. I mean, they worked with, um, the training support specialist. They worked with, um, some of those book studies that people have done, like it was research-based. So when you look at that, it shows you what skills should be mastered by the end of kindergarten and what skills should be mastered by the end of first grade. Okay, so what we did as a school, and I, I know that every school did this, but I'm only going to speak for Southside. This right here is just a snippet of kindergarten. So I mean, I could give you all 60 of our kindergarten kids, but I just did a snippet. So what we're doing is tracking those skills and that progression because they're building blocks and you need those building blocks to move on to the next thing. So we're restructured the way we do our guided reading. We call it now literacy skills groups. And we, every three weeks, make new groups. So kids are reassessed at the end of like two and a half weeks. And then Julie and I meet together and then we meet with like K-1 teachers. We meet with 2, 3, and we totally make their group dependent on what they need skills-wise. So you can kind of see kindergarten, they come in with like those no expectations, obviously. Um, but then when you look at first grade, right here where this black line is, that's those, these are the skills they should have mastered in kindergarten. So we know that a lot goes into it. It's not just because we're not teaching that in kindergarten, but some kids don't, things don't click as fast. We need to make sure that we meet where we are. So obviously, we're not going into these first grade skills with first grade during that skills group. We're looking at what are they missing hole-wise? And then giving them instruction on that for two and a half weeks and then moving them on as we can. So we also wanted to look at what does second grade look like? So you can see that we still have some holes there with this group. And again, I just took that first part of the alphabet when I snipped it. Um, third grade? And I'll be honest, when you look at this, last year is when we started our guided reading group every day. And when kids get that, that repetitive instruction, it's very beneficial for them. So, you know, we can go back and look at, okay, what did this group, this cohort look like in kindergarten? What did their groups look like? Hey, obviously, you can't go back and change things from what it was, but we can look at, we are giving them those skill groups as well.
Can I say that? We also looked at our i- our reading diagnostic data, and that has spoken about phonemic awareness, phonics. And we took those students who are low in phonemic awareness and phonics, and we also have them in skills groups. So we're using both sets of data to help us make decisions.
This is just a snippet of fifth grade. Everyone in fifth grade has not taken that skills assessment, but we did look at that i-ready diagnostic. For anybody that did not test out of that phonemic awareness, we've looked at that. Now, some kids might be, they have that special education and be getting extra support that way. But we also have built-in intervention time. We need to make sure that we are using all of the time that we do have to make the biggest impact. So these are just, um, pictures that we have because again, every kid is getting, we don't call it a guided reading group anymore. We call it a skills group. Um, that doesn't mean they're not in books. They are in books. Um, but especially with our littles, it starts off with, they might be in an ABC book. So it's just about a Apple app, like you're just going through those. Then there's decodable books. So they know enough letters of the alphabet and they're able to be able to decode that cat, like cat and put that together before they then move into guided reading books. Um, so they meet at different parts, like classroom, we saw a library, like there's a group happening all of the time. So there's two groups. We, uh, at Southside based our kids, we took all of our kindergarten and first graders together and we scaled them up. So you might have a group that's got some kindergarten and first grade kids together, but we wanted to be able to look at what staff do we have and how can we get the most groups happening? Um, we did the same thing with second and third, and we did the same thing with, um, third and fourth. That doesn't mean there's not some outliers. Um, we, for instance, have a first grader who is reading well above where she needs to be. She actually goes to a reading group with second and third grade, um, because we wanted to make sure that we're giving her what she needs so she can continue to grow as well. Okay, so literacy skill groups allow us to give kids explicit and specific instruction at a student's independent level so that they can build a strong foundation of understanding for where they are. This helps us to support them as the master, as they master each skill, one or more at a time in a small group setting where they can get their individual needs met on a daily basis. Therefore, ensuring that we can fill in any gaps that they might have in their understanding of what means to be a reader. This is a quote from Amber Harper, uh, kindergarten teacher that we have. So our teachers have really embraced those skills groups and we are seeing the success that kids have, um, which makes them more excited. So we are doing that, but the other major difference that we are doing this year is UFLY. I don't know if you've heard of that. It is a phonics program. So Jen Roberts teaches second grade and she is going to share about UFLY.
I will say that last year and this year, I, I just absolutely love the changes that I've seen. I love that my kids, every single one of my kids is getting into a reading group every single day. And now we are actually breaking it down and filling in those gaps. And then we use that intervention time to fill in those gaps as well. And then in my classroom, if you ever want to stop by, I have baskets on a shelf. And you just pull the basket, it's got a poster note of the kids that are working on that skill. Go play a game with them. So you're welcome to come in and play a game and work on any of those skills. But I also like that we have a phonics program now, uh, that we are following. It's the University of Florida Literacy Initiative. Okay, bonus points. So we, every day, set aside a half hour and we do a phonics lesson. There's so many different components in that that we're getting a lot of those literacy skills as well. We do a new concept on day one, and then we come and we do the new concept, we review it on day two, and we look at some decodable texts and find those words. So an entire lesson is an hour. So I'm going to do a lesson with you. Um, so if you're, you, you need to stretch. There's no bathroom breaks during phonics time, so you'll have to hold it. Um, so I'm going to try and do this. I usually, see, I, I usually use the remote and we're like popping through things. I'm going to pop through a lot faster than I do with my kids. So we start day one every time with phonemic awareness. So I'm going to tell you sounds and you are going to blend them together and tell me the word. Here are your sounds. M, r, ch. Good. Or. Four. Very good. Uh, then we'd also go through and we would do the other way. So I would give you the word hard and you have to do the sounds. So your word is hard.
H.
H.
Hard.
Hard. Very good. And we need to remember that ah is a silent, we don't use our voice. Very good. And then we do a couple other words. We're getting into where we're doing, um, syllables as well, and then we blend the syllables together. And then it's awesome because like tomorrow, we're going to talk about the word import. So then we can use the vocabulary as well. Then we, after we spend some time there, then we do a visual drill where I'm going to just pop up some letters and the response is, I'll show you one. Y spells y, i, and e. Because we've learned that the y at the end of the, at the end of a word, sometimes it says e, sometimes it says i. And then in a word, it can say yep. And so the kids do this and they're like really quick with it. Y spells yep. Y spells i. Y spells e. Go to the next one. D, g, e spells j. G spells j and g spells g. T, c, h spells ch. E, d spells ed. E, d spells d. E, d spells t. So we pop through as many as we can do in just a couple minutes. That's all the ones I've picked out for you. I think you do it. Then we also do an auditory drill where I will tell them, I need you to write the letter that makes, that spells r. So they would write either on their dry erase board, doodle buddy. Uh, they love it when I say, "Go to your desk and get your dry erase marker," because they just write it right on their desk. They think that's the coolest. Uh, we also do a blending drill on the board, so they come back and they take turns coming up. And I select the letters that we need and they just come up and they tap the letters to make the word. So I'll choose a student and say, "Can you build the word molt?" And so they come up, molt. And they build the word molt. And then I'll say, "Can you call on a friend?" Or call, usually it's a boy, obviously, call on a girl, whatever, and vice versa. "Can you call on someone to change molt to most?" So they're using that, changing the sound at the end there. Sometimes beginning, sometimes end. That goes on for a couple of minutes and then we go over the new concept. So here's your new concept. And we're going to talk about R, the R-controlled vowel, AR usually represents the R sound. And I love this component. We talk about exactly how your mouth goes, how your mouth should look. And so we, the, to make the AR sound, we start with our jaw dropped and our mouth open. Then we raise the sides of our tongue and partially close our mouth to make the r sound with your voice on. And they, they got all of that. They know like, okay, I'm curbing and voice on, they always like this, yeah, my voice is on. So they know all this, how to fly through all this. We talk about where we would find the spelling, R, AR would be in the middle of the word, like bark and part. It would be at the end of the word, like far and stark. It might be in the beginning of the word, like in art and arm. And then we're going to incorporate or, I'm going to fly through these. Because again, I don't really want to do an hour. We also take time to write on the board. So they're writing on their desk, they're writing on a dry erase board, they're writing on their iPad. They're coming up and writing on the board. I'll write on the board, they write on the board, so we're working on some handwriting too. And then we go through and we start, we read words together. They'll watch me read and then they say it where we find the words that have those sounds. Like, look at this, big long word. And they look at that, they think, oh my gosh, I can't read that. Yes, you can, because we've learned all of those sounds. And they just have to put it together. So they're seeing a lot of success. And when they're reading, I see and hear them stop and go, oh wait, that's that e, I gotta, okay. And then they know it's in there, it's in their brain. So we're, we're going to learn the different sounds. Day two, we do some more word work where they might be writing or, they have that word, that blending word on their iPad. We go over irregular words, like the word people, and I call them rule breakers. These words are rule breakers. Because that e-o, p-o, right now, they don't understand, so we put a harp there because we don't know what rule that word people is following. But we just learned yesterday and today that the le says o at the end. So there's no longer a harp under the le. So we talk about these irregular words, we spell them, then we read some connected texts where I read it, then they read it. And we can get some vocabulary in this way as well. We practice spelling those words and then we get these awesome decodable texts. And they love this part because we read through it and then they get to come up and use the pen and highlight the words that have the, whatever the new concept is that we're working on. And so that gets us through day two and then we're excited because we've done two days and I just did an hour lesson in five minutes.
But that UFLY is happening in every classroom, K-3, okay? And we know that there are holes in four or five, so all of our four or five teachers have the same resources and they will work on it either whole group during intervention time or also like, they've really dug holes on what do my kids need? Like that pre-test. Um, because parts of the book, obviously, you start at the very beginning for kindergarten. You started different parts of the, the book for first grade and second grade. So they really, what do their kids need? Because they have holes in fourth and fifth grade too. So that is reading in a nutshell for Southside.
Is there any questions, members? Thank you for your time, appreciated. Board, next on the agenda is business items. So, uh, first item, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, so board, we've been talking for some time about backup generators in different buildings. We're completing backup generators for the high school and we're looking, we're moving into a backup generator at the central office and that should round out most all of our buildings, uh, with backup generators. Um, we've talked about in our building, uh, the age of the electric panels and so forth. Part of updating those while we install a new backup generator, working with the architects, the engineers, uh, as well as some of the contractors, uh, to see what those costs are. Um, in your packet, you'll see a recommendation, uh, for, from Markico and Villanueva to move forward with the bid that we received from Kissinger Electric, who also installs over other backup generators. We've looked at the bid, um, we received one bid, um, for this project, uh, the amount of $317,260. Uh, so this time I would ask the board, uh, to approve the contract with Kissinger Electric to install a backup generator at the central office location.
I'll make a motion to approve the Kissinger offer as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jansen to approve the offer as written, seconded by Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moves the same. Motion carries.
Sorry, board, I didn't say this would be used as extra money, so it will not be any taxpayer dollars.
Thank you for the clarification. Next item is, uh, Dr. Grimal.
Yeah, we are asking for approval of the East Noble calendar for 24, 25, and 25, 26. Uh, Dr. Forrest has the hook there, you need to look at those. Um, we added two additional professional development days, which we agreed upon in the contract, moving from 183 days to 185 days. And then we were put on the beginning of the school year. Um, we also moved our fall break back one week, the, so it would not interfere with our count day, um, in October. And, uh, we also adjusted what we have known as our waiver days. So just adjusting those to be corrected for this calendar. So just adjusting those to be corrected for this calendar. So we're asking for approval for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
Question. Sure. Have we always taken more moves at K and L?
We have not, we actually tried to do it for president's day.
I got you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the calendars as presented by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moves the same. Motion carries. Next business item, Mr. Leach.
Yes, the last item in your packet, board, you received list of items we asked to deem obsolete and those no value to the corporation, so we can sell those, dispose of them as cost effective manner. Um, a little bit different in this list is there are some, uh, there's some apparel from the middle school, uh, some old uniforms from different sports, some football helmets that are no longer to be used in competition uh, because of the age and for safety reasons, but people want them to put on shelves, decorations and so forth. So these, those items will not be put on eBay, they'll be sold at the middle school during events. Uh, it'll be basketball games, volleyball games, what, what have you. So that's the difference in this list versus previous list. So, uh, board, I ask you to deem these items obsolete, uh, so we can move forward in a manner.
I do have a question about, is it like the little law enforcement state will know like they're not?
Yes.
To use around and assess the decorations.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Now, we have a motion to approve as presented by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moves the same. Motion carries. Our next agenda item is a discussion item, board policies, Dr. Gamal.
As you're accustomed to, this is the first reading of these policies. Uh, they're. Okay, so, um, if you will look, I have them in chronological order in there. However, um, there, I will be speaking to them in clusters because there are several of them that have, that are repetitive through there, that's just how Neola does it. So, um, we are looking first at, um, policy zero-one, four-two, election and eligibility to serve. So I printed off a new packet for you today because we did have a few changes and I'll discuss those as we go along. Um, those are reposted on our website, so that is the updated version there. Um, but this policy is just revised to reflect our current eligibility requirements for school board kids. Um, if you flip the next page is nursing mothers and that is policy fourteen, twenty-five, thirty-four, twenty-five, forty-four, twenty-five. So this requires employers to provide certain employees who are nursing mothers to provide a private place for them to express request. And that is in all of, all three of those policies. Okay? Uh, the next one is tobacco use and prevention, which is sixteen, fifteen, thirteen, thirty-two, fifteen, forty-two, fifteen, fifty-five, twelve, and seventy-four, thirty-four. So if you look at that, all they did was to update this policy with recommendations from the Indiana Department of Health Tobacco Prevention and Succession Team. So they just redefined what tobacco means. Any questions on that one? Please stop me if there are, Penny, as I go along here, because I know this is a lot. Uh, next one is employment, uh, support staff. Um, looked at this and a lot of this update was just mainly about paraprofessionals and what those requirements are, regardless of what programs they, they used to be only Title I used to be highly qualified, but, um, at East Noble we required them all to be highly qualified. And it defines what that means and it also gives the categories for support staff. Any questions on that? I know, want the information. Policy fifty-seven, seventy-one, which is surgeon seizure. Uh, this is a revision to allow the use of metal detectors to alert school staff to students in possession of other unauthorized objects, which may include, but not limited to, vape pens or baby-related equipment and our devices. Sixty-one, fifty-two is to fees and charges. This is just an updated policy for the homeless student, students, established in the McKinney-Venture Homeless Assistance Act. Policy sixty-two, fifty, um, required A B M counts for the purpose of state funding and verification of residency of membership. So this was something that is required and Mr. Leach has worked really hard with our preservers and secretaries to arrange and get all of this information. Uh, but it has been revised to the type of document that we are looking for. Um, East Noble requires two as reflected in this policy. Any questions?
How diff, is it still difficult to get these turned in at a time of passion?
I think they're still working through it. I think, uh, one of the secretaries I talked to, they still had twenty-five family that they're unable to get anything from. But we just have to document that, make sure it's available ever the state board and council's pullback that we have documentation to turn to get that. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Leach? We've worked really hard on it, so. Policy seventy-five, forty, point zero-two, web accessibility content apps and services. Uh, this has been updated to reflect best practices and the evolving state of law related to website accessibility based on the American Disabilities Act. So, um, I went through this with Joanna Cook. And we did have a few updates today, so if you look in your packet, um, there, I did highlight those in yellow for you. I think it was on the second page here. If I took something out, I still highlighted it, so you can see it was removed. Um, and at the very end, I believe there was one more item there that we didn't feel like we were ready to put this into our policy, but we're heading down this road. So the last, uh, yellow highlighted area is the one that we are removing at this time. Any questions on that? All right, the very last one is a policy that hasn't been assigned over at this time. This was written, uh, by a local attorney in a request to remove materials from school libraries. We have one that is very similar, that is about removing instructional materials, but this one's specific for libraries. It does take an effect in January one. And, um, the procedure for each school is to prepare a catalog of materials available at the school library. That is already done for Destiny, anyone can have access to that. Um, the next step also is that they can submit a request to remove the material from the library that follows the law stated in this policy. Um, and then we make sure that we publish it on the website, which that's already done. So, in looking at this policy, which I have in your packet, uh, the one thing I did add to it today because I did not realize that I left it off, uh, was the very last page where it is the actual form. And I believe I had, I don't think I had the form in your packet, I think I accidentally left that off. But, um, I did review that with Joanna Cook again, who worked with the media specialists to make sure that we have something that was acceptable there. Of course, it is.
It is this.
You have it right here. Yes, those last two pages are probably, I should have highlighted them before you sent me through to the. So, so, these are books that, that are in a library and if someone feels that they want them removed, they can go through the process to request to remove a book.
Because it's been read and then the book was brought home and.
Or they could have looked it up on Destiny and, and found that there was a book that they didn't like. Or they went to a resource and reviewed it and they can turn that into, as it goes directly to the board president. That's the new line. And the board president, then at the next meeting, will share it with the board and you can, you can vote whether it fits that criteria or you're gonna send it on to a committee. So that's kind of the, the little change that we have.
Does it might not even have the book in our library?
No, you would have it not.
If they found it on that Destiny, it would be in our library.
It could be, we have found some that were, um, people thought they were in the library because they were on the list and then we couldn't locate them, so. But they could still go and request. Questions, thoughts?
And unlike, uh, curriculum areas, if the board says proceed, then the committee made up of three staff members and two parents will make the final decision.
And so can we appeal to them?
They can be appealed, but they will then make the decision. The superintendent or the person requesting the review can appeal if they disagree.
Correct.
And that's when the board then to make.
Sets up.
Do we read there what they're?
You'll get all of the information that was.
That they used to find what was in that book. And how we can use, just like the other.
Yes.
Got you.
Yes. It's changed a little bit and it's very similar.
So like the other one, it would, that's what I'm sorry. Not like the other one, that would be to either endorse or not endorse the committee's decision.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so nothing's changed here.
How did we put together, sorry.
Go ahead.
How did we put together that committee, like how are those staff members and parents chosen?
We actually haven't even talked about that specifically, uh, about them as, I mean.
And it's not something to be talked about.
Yeah, we haven't even talked about them, that was the line, so. But it says just three staff members, that's about what, um, the recommendation of the local attorney and said.
Two parents.
What's that?
And two parents.
And two parents, yes. I hadn't got that for that yet.
I just didn't know how they were chosen.
It doesn't say, it just says this school board will direct the superintendent that doesn't need to appoint a committee of three faculty members and two parents. So normally when we get any kind of those recommendations, we go to the building leaders and say, "Who would you recommend?" They work with the parents, I mean, I would randomly select one, but, you know, I wouldn't know them as well.
And would you suggest if your parents are interested in being on this committee is to contact the building? Say, "Hey, if that ever comes up, please, if I had that request from parents, how do I get on it?" Is that a way to do that?
But I would, I would really, would like to rotate because we're, like, we could have multiple requests at one time.
Sure.
Well, I think that might be biased.
Potentially.
If you use it, "Well, I want to view this book." Well, then you obviously have a bias against that book or for that book. So randomly chosen and asked might be better than someone who wants to do it. I understand that would be, but I think random, you know, pull up something out of, you know, random would be better than someone who wants to be on. Ron and Paul, Ron and Paul, Ron and Paul, I feel like that would be a very.
Well, the deterrent's gonna be, although we thought we did the right thing and the committee in the last round, um, we are being advised to do no open public session, take public comments. There's not really be a lot of people, just my opinion, that are gonna wanna do that. I would, so, I don't know, pulling a random person, I think we're gonna have to personally go to different people and see if they're willing to do that. Because we are really a staff that are very apprehensive to do this.
Doug, going back to your point, I guess I kind of misread it in that the committee makes the decision and it stands unless the superintendent or the person requesting the review of the book appeals to the board. Rather than the last process, they make a recommendation, we act upon it either a yea or nay. That's not necessarily the case here though, is that correct? They make the recommend, it's not a recommendation, it's determination. And then the next step in the process would be if the superintendent or the person that requested the review of the book, then it comes to the board to make a final determination.
Yes.
So we don't make, we don't make the determination. I think it's pretty fair to say whoever put that out there, that had to have the decision, they're gonna appeal it.
Absolutely, right. This is an extra step before it reaches us personally.
Right, but the board, once again, is either going to endorse the committee.
Commit.
Or not endorse the committee, is that correct? What I heard, it's not endorse the book.
Unless, unless the person requested it and the person that, and I guess superintendent, Mr. Reese, if they both agree, if they both agree that this is the committee's decision to deliver this, which I have heard, then we don't have, we don't get involved with it, is that correct?
That's how I understand it, so we can change and modify it based on what your input. If you'd rather just make it be your decision, but, um, if you wanted to vote off the recommendation of that first committee, you don't think that's, that's how you did, that's how you did the last time? That's how I understand it.
So in reality, the board does not have to read this book. We need to read the recommendation of the book, did I say that correctly? The recommendation of the committee. I don't need to read the book, I need to read the recommendation and it didn't meet all the criteria and what were their opinions on it. Is that what, is that what I'm doing? We need to vote though, it's just a practice, you know, it's a book in its entirety, not just what somebody told us. Right. I don't agree with that if I, if I believe that someone else is making, someone else did that for us. And they're answering the question. Especially checks and balances, when I see when it comes, if, if it does make it us or the checks and balances there and if we don't actually go, know what's in it and we're going into it blindly, then, I mean, how can you say that that's inaccurate information that you're being given, honestly? Well, then I will respectfully disapprove.
I really have to keep in mind that you could get multiple book requests at the exact same time and trying to meet that timeline and read every single one of those books is gonna be very difficult. And that's why we did put in here, actually I didn't, the attorney did, "The purpose of perception, examin shall not be interpretive to require committee members to read the entirety of each question resource as, as the time required to do so would make the review process impractical." And that's really why that was put in there.
The timeline on this is pretty quick.
It would be very difficult to read this many books if there's multiple requests at one time.
However, with a recent request, my understanding is it's gonna be going book at a time they review. So would that spread that timeframe? I don't know, if we get twelve of these at one time, it's gonna be done with that certain amount of days.
I mean, we've, we've gotta be able to make it doable for us, so.
Right.
Right now, the ones that we have were while operating under the previous, because we don't have this one in place. So, um, we're gonna follow the timeline of what we've done before, we're trying to get that through the period. But we, we have to, we need to have multiple ones, because it's not practical for us to be able to read every single book. I'd love to be able to do it.
I also agree with you, Teresa. People will not want to step up and help out.
That's the issue we're having right now.
Sure. Why should they? You know, they made a recommendation, it's this board that acted, not that small group. You may have to make a determination.
So I guess what I'm asking from you, board, is to look that over, think through, uh, we stopped a month here to, I can take everything back to attorney, we could write. we start a month here to, I can take everything back to attorney, we can rewrite it, we want to make sure it's right for the board, you know, the process is right for our people, communities, whatever we need to do, so any feedback that you can give, it would be appreciated on that.
I have a question about the policies, Ms. Public Ryan. Has the state given us any more guidance or clarification to these?
They just submitted at the end of October, instructional costs to the state for reimbursement. I expect more guidance to come after they review that, that's going to be some time.
But not just for all schools.
All schools, either the year, follow the same pattern.
Can I just, now, with three legislators today, and there's some listening, having that conversation about how much are those being covered in what we are there? We'll see with that. Be interesting.
Is that one of the funding mandate, the technical material?
They find themselves.
Yeah, so right now, they're saying the pot is, I think, $169,000. I think they said somewhere around $151,000 is a change per student. East Noble myself, and the groups that have worked on this with me, we submitted just over $700,000, about $214,000 per student, which is right in line with a lot of the schools around our area, so it would be interesting to see what they see and do as we move forward. I don't know much will change for the second year, because we all know from contract, or the budget up every two years, and that one's done this year, so it'll be, it'll be, it'll be interesting.
No other questions, board? Okay, next item is laid items, Dr. Gamo.
I have no laid items.
Dr. Bruce, your laid item? Okay, item 12, comments from the superintendent, Dr. Gamo?
Hey, just want to thank Southside administrators and staff here tonight, setting up for this meeting, I know it takes a lot of time and effort, but also the presentation was outstanding, so thank you for that. Also, want to thank any of our veterans and our new audience tonight, we appreciate your service. Hope that you were able to, to have enjoyed us, so. Also, want to thank Luke Bamsdats for stepping up into the position of the interim AD position, just to finish out the school year, appreciate his leadership in that area, help us out. We also held our professional development day on Monday, had a lot going on there. Our teachers were in different sessions about standards, assessment, the science of rating, the arts, corporation guide and collaborations, I-Ready updates, behavior interventions, media specialists, we were able to get together and do more things. So kudos to Dr. Forrest for making all that happen and putting it together, and all those people that were leading those sessions, much appreciated, it can't happen without all of those people working together, so thank you for all of you that put together on that. Also, this last week, I sent out the town hall meeting input, so hopefully everybody got a chance to read through that. We will be turning a lot of that into frequently asked questions, because a lot of it was questions, and there are things that we're already doing, so we want to be able to share that, that information, so the community knows what we're actually doing in our schools. We'll also be sending all of that information to committees and just looking at the feasibility of it. And just keep in mind, this is a plan that's a five-year plan, so this is not going to get done tomorrow. We have a lot of information that you gave us, and we love that idea, and we want to be able to figure out how we can work on it together and be able to move forward. So just thank you to everybody that participated in that, we appreciate that, and this conversation's in hope to continue those. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gamo. Comments or questions from the board? Any questions or comments, board members?
Just that I was able to attend the Andy Junior Show at Snowball Middle School Friday here, it was very good, kids did very well. The art is in another building too, so that's always exciting as well.
I've got one question for you, Dr. Gamo, concerns Mr. Brumbaus comments, do you have any information on that? This is, yeah, we're a small town, agricultural community, and hopefully you can...
Yes, I, yes, thank you for bringing that up, so I'll check that out, but we are bound by the state on certain ways that we can label those things, so, or code those things in our system, so allow me to check that out, and I'll get back with you on that, okay?
But at the same time, the state allows exemptions for the Indiana State Fair.
For the state fair, yeah, that's a nice.
And we do give that one, so if we miss that, then that's, that's on us, and we would have to, but nationally, I don't know, I'd have to check all of that information out.
Other, other community schools are doing something, I mean...
Yeah, I would have to find out how they're coding it, because we've been told no, so.
So she'll, she'll get back with you, sir.
And I did forget one, but.
Yes.
Congratulations, Jen, from the therapy doc.
Oh, yes.
Okay, with that, the next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, December 13, 2023, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at the administration office.